Meeting of October for the Planning Commission with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from September. Do I have a second?
Second.
Approved. First item tonight is the hotel rooftop dining zoning amendment, which we heard last, we heard in September, and we're seeing the applicant this month because we felt that there was, there was, there were discrepancies between the 2019 outdoor dining ordinance that we developed and the proposed hotel outdoor dining ordinance. And I thought it was important, I thought, and I think the rest of the planners thought it was important, to try to figure out where the discrepancies or differences were and take the opportunity tonight to walk through those and decide where, where discrepancies may not really matter, because this is hotel dining versus restaurant dining. So there's a, there's a big difference there. The other thing that's different is the W B O D ordinance, the outdoor dining ordinance for restaurants apply to the W B O D. This proposed hotel dining ordinance originally was designed for the P L O district. It was, it evolved into a township-wide ordinance rewrite. So that's, that's something to consider as well as we just, as we look at this. I think from, from my point of view, it's just, it's just due diligence on the planning commission's part. I don't have, I don't have any bad feelings about outdoor dining. I think we've moved to a place in society where a lot of people are, are going out because they can sit outside. So that's the point, I think the point here is just to really make sure that we do the, we do the right thing and we, and we take a little bit of time to, to weigh out what we have in front of us so everybody's on the same page. So with that, that said, Mary and Steve put together a memo which basically defines what, defines what isn't, what elements are not included in the proposed hotel dining ordinance that were in the 2019 restaurant, outdoor dining restaurant ordinance. And I think it might be useful for the commission just to walk, quickly walk through those, those elements, those points.
Just one preliminary question. Has the applicant seen this memo?
No, we have not. I mean, but I presume it's the Wayne overlay district.
Can you mic it and?
I presume that is the.
And tell everybody who you are.
Sorry.
Excuse me. John Ambrose with Toll Brothers. I represent the applicant. Good evening. Good evening.
It would be good if you had a copy because it makes it easier to work along together. Yes.
Sure, no problem. Great, thank you. And, oh, we have an introduction?
I mean, not to jump on this too prematurely, but one way of doing this would be for the applicant to say, I'm okay with this, I'm not okay with that, we have no understanding why that's necessary, et cetera. That might be a way to address it.
Well, I think a conversation would be a good way to do this so that we're not just all going through this one at a time. But if you guys haven't seen this, like.
I think that we're okay though, because what we did after the last meeting, good evening Allison Zarro on behalf of Toll Brothers, and with me is John Ambrose for the record. What we did is we actually took the Wayne Business Overlay District ordinance itself and went through it and had our own little discussion about, let's talk about why we did or did not include something originally. So I think it's, I'm guessing it's going to be the same and so we're prepared to go through it with you.
Okay. Do you, do you want to continue or do you want, do you want us just to go to it?
You could, you could go ahead and go to it unless you have any other questions for us preliminarily.
Matt, I had one question.
I'm sorry, please, go ahead, sir.
I just had one question. We're referring to them as the applicant, but in this instance, are you really the applicant at this point? Or is this an amendment to the, to the ordinance? They just are looking to take advantage of it?
They wrote, they wrote the.
They may, right. But I'm just saying, are you applying for something?
We had originally filed a petition to amend the zoning ordinance, but specifically for the P L O as it relates to hotel rooftop dining. Now it's sort of been brought into everything. So to your point, I think it's a little beyond just the applicant at this point. But I'm, but we're happy to participate in the conversation.
And whatever is decided would apply not just to them, but it would apply across the board to anyone who wants to have a hotel and put rooftop dining on it.
That's correct.
Just one moment, I want to bend her ear real quick. So what I see is they've got, I forgot my damn glasses in the car, but they've got eight topics. I think we're north of that. So I was just trying to reconcile from our little highlight, which is, which is not. All right, so that's 100 feet.
Megan, you have the memo too, right?
March 1.
Great.
It contains a residential use. I don't see the residential use here. Yeah, yeah. So that's fine. So if, if I might suggest, we've done our own little bit of diligence. We'll start with yours and then I just note one or maybe two instances where there is a difference between our two documents and we can just talk about those points last. If that's you, all right?
Sure.
All right, great. Allison, do you want me to go or like?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the chair.
Well, they thought it would be helpful for us just to walk through and convey to them why and why not.
Okay, sorry, I missed that part while it was over there. So the first one that's on this list is the rooftop dining area must be operated by the operator of the restaurant which serves as the principal use of the building. In this case, we know the hotel is actually the principal use, which is one of the reasons we did not include that. The other thing, and I think this is even broader than just Toll, if it's being considered for the whole township, a lot of times there is a separate operator of the restaurant from the operator of the hotel itself. So we had left that out for two reasons. And it actually, more specifically comes to mind, the Wayne Hotel today has a separate operator of the restaurant from the hotel.
Right.
So I don't think we'd necessarily be opposed to say, you know, if there's an operator of a restaurant operation in the hotel, that they're operating that rooftop dining, but we didn't want it to be construed that the operator of the hotel had to be the same as the restaurant operator.
Yeah, I was trying to remember. I couldn't remember. Mary, maybe you can help me, why that was important in the restaurant dining ordinance?
I don't remember why it was important in the dining ordinance. I really don't.
Kevin is?
My only thought, and I don't, I wasn't as involved with the creation of that ordinance, but just thinking of it as it's coming up in conversation now, is that I don't know that we wanted to establish rooftop dining on non-restaurant buildings. So, you know, it's going to be on a principal use that has a restaurant. So we're not creating, in essence, another restaurant on a different use.
Okay.
It's, it's also an ancillary use of an existing restaurant as opposed to a different restaurant on top of an existing restaurant.
Right. But in this case, it really isn't applicable.
I, I think number one says that it would be operated by the operator of the restaurant, which serves as the principal use in the building.
Yeah, but I think what Allison is pointing out is that the principal use of a hotel is the hotel. So that would have to be revised to reflect that it would be the operator of the restaurant in the hotel.
Right.
Right. That seems like a, a simple tweak though, to carry over the, the purpose of the, to extend it was in the Wayne Business District without making the hotel operator get into the restaurant business.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, the intent is sometimes the operator of a hotel does act as the food and beverage operator. Sometimes the operator of a hotel does not need a third party. The reason we removed it was two point A, didn't know that the restaurant use was applicable to the hotel use that's referenced here, and then two, the hotel needs to reserve the right to kind of pivot and move in whatever direction it, it sees fit.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm okay with this. Anyone else have a objection to it, removing this?
So are we keeping it and just writing in the hotel, in the rooftop dining area, the rooftop dining area must be operated by the operator of the restaurant in the hotel, or we just getting rid of it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, or a restaurant. I mean, theoretically, there could be more than one restaurant.
Yes, exactly.
So as long as it's operated by whoever's operating a restaurant in the hotel, I think it satisfies the purposes and, and doesn't infringe too much on the, on the hotels.
I'm gonna throw everybody a curveball real quick, just from a hospitality perspective, because if you guys are, and ladies and gentlemen are broadly thinking about how this applies, there are small stalls. By way of an example, how many have stayed at a hotel with their Starbucks? Starbucks can be an independent operator, right? So in the context of thinking large, I don't, I don't want to throw you a curveball, but you might find yourselves back here talking to somebody who wants a Starbucks stall, right? And I don't, or, or something else, right? So to get tripped up in the language of the operator of the hotel restaurant has to be the operator of the F and B, well, but if they're serving Starbucks on the, on the roof.
I think what he's saying is, as long as it's an operator of a restaurant, so you could have a Starbucks, and then if you had someone else that was doing the dining upstairs, then it would be.
My only thinking was, you can't have a separate use on a non-use rep, you know, like, so the point was, like, you can't have a separate use on top of a restaurant. Or you can't have a, a restaurant used on top of a, just a general building to create two uses in one space.
I think, I think you're snatching defeat from the jaws of victory. I think you won this one.
Yeah, I think that what he was suggesting works for what you're saying, just so you know.
Yes, ma'am.
[laughing].
And we don't mind curveballs, but.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yep. Now, we're, I think we're good with the language you suggested.
So umbrellas. What do you guys think there?
Umbrellas.
I, I feel like people aren't gonna put projectiles on their roof. I mean, why would you do that? So like.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there are sunny days. Some offering for cover is where the, you know, where the ownership was coming from. You can properly weight them and anchor them in a manner, and collapse them during times of inclement weather to ensure you don't have projectiles volleyed up.
I don't, I don't think you want to run a place where you're gonna have that happening. I mean, I think you're gonna take care of that.
Okay, good.
I mean, if, does anyone disagree with that?
I don't see any reason to change it from what we had in the, the prior ordinance and that instead of using umbrellas, you use canopies or awnings.
I agree with.
Why would it be different for one for the other?
Okay, just, it seems like a, it just doesn't, okay. All right, you know, I'm willing to go with whatever the rest of the planning commission wants.
So we're striking that? Or we're leaving it?
My understanding is that we're gonna leave that in, so it's the same in both.
Yeah, I guess so. I, I just, I, to me, it just doesn't, never mind. I, okay, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll leave this. And I just thought. Okay.
The next one that we have highlighted here in the memo is rooftop dining shall be permitted only between March 1st and November 30th. We had deliberately left that out just based on sort of post-COVID, people are actually spending more time outside at outdoor dining, even beyond that sort of what would have generally in the past been, hey, people don't want to sit outside in the winter. If the weather's nice, people are tending to sit outside anyway. So we had deliberately not included that.
Yeah, and in 2019, we weren't faced with COVID. So we weren't, I don't think we were thinking about this in, in that way. And I think, I think in two years, a lot of habits have changed.
Yes.
And I, it, it seems very restrictive for us to, to say that you, your hotel couldn't have a broader schedule.
And we would still be complying with the noise ordinance, everything else, you know, lighting, anything else that would sort of be that outside control on the operation.
Any other thoughts on that?
I, I agree with leaving it out at this point.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the next item, the zoning officer graciously pointed out to me that that is already included in the hotel rooftop dining ordinance. So we can skip that one.
Okay, great.
So then I guess we're on to number six, which says the number of rooftop seats shall not exceed the number of seats in the principal restaurant use. Again, this was about principal restaurant use, so we had not included it. And from a code perspective, will be limited.
Allison, what happened to five?
Five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying that number five was already included. Oh, four, sorry. I skipped, I skipped over five instead of four. Yes, you're correct. Four is included. Number five, we discussed, we actually think that we can comply with that requirement. We're not really, so we don't really have an issue with it either way, since this is now broader, it was sort of not applicable in some sense to us, but we can comply with it. So.
I'm ju, I'm just curious. Can you comply with it? I don't have the, your, your layout here because you're, you're on a corner.
The highest daily trip intersection, which is gonna be King of Prussia Road, dictates the orientation of where the rooftop dining experience would be. And ultimately, for visual purposes, they want two things. A, not to be able to visually see it from the elevation of the street. B, they want it furthest back from the street. And I think at this juncture, the way rooftop lays out, assuming King of Prussia Road is that, I think it's, what do they call it? A T?
Average daily.
Yeah, A T, like, King of Prussia Road has the highest ADTs, and therefore that rooftop experience outside needs to be furthest from that road, and that's kind of the way it's going.
So I'm just curious. I don't know what that side road is called. Is that just a driveway or is it a road?
It's the access road, because you have the, the light rail.
Right, right. All I'm saying is, just to make sure that's not being considered your a corner property.
Right.
I don't know that.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, again, i, is this a corner property or is it not? It's, for conversation's sake, assume it is. We can comply. And if it's not, then it's a new point.
Okay.
Yes, because our higher classification would still be King of Prussia Road even if it's considered a road. So we think we're okay there.
Before we talk about not complying, comply, remember that whatever we do here is an ordinance and there may be other hotels that want this.
Right, exactly. So that's why we're saying we think we're fine, understanding that you're now looking at this at a, from a broader perspective. Okay, so now number six, which I just get to head to. The number of rooftop seats shall not exceed the number of seats in the principal restaurant use. Again, just sort of going back to the conversation on the first item, principal restaurant use isn't really what this is, but also from a rooftop perspective, we feel we will be governed by building code in terms of, you know, floor load, emergency access. There's going to be a limit on occupancy governing this, you know, how many seats we'd have outside anyway. As it would in any other, you know, building context.
And, and your numbers on the rooftop were, as I remember, 140 and 50? 140 inside, 50 outside?
No, I think it was 140 in total, sir.
Oh, okay.
We had roughly an 80, 80, 50, 75, 55 mix, which may grow, may shrink a little bit. We haven't finished off the program.
Okay.
Do we know the, the, the purpose behind the, the number for the restaurant aspect? Is there something we're not considering in terms of?
Well, in 2019, when you did the rooftop dining ordinance, you didn't want the rooftop dining to be, to be driving the bus. And I think maybe this is one of those things that changed during COVID. And we're gonna recognize that sometimes you, especially on nice days, there might be four people sitting inside and 100 people sitting outside. That's an exaggeration. But, so this was a lot more applicable in 2019 than it is now.
So, so one consideration I thought that was out there, you know, goes down, you know, to the non-numbered paragraphs at the bottom, which may not be an issue for this hotel, but maybe it would be at a different hotel. If you're now increasing your capacity by having all of these tables on the rooftops, are you still gonna have the parking spaces to accommodate those folks?
But one of the benefits that we have tonight is that the zoning officer is here, and we were having a little chat before the meeting started, and he's prepared to tell you exactly where the non-conforming hotels are, or the other hotels in town that you have to actually zone around, so it's not as theoretical a discussion.
Even so, that would be a snapshot of today.
Well.
It may not be tomorrow.
True, true. But you're not gonna get any new non-conforming hotels for a long time.
Okay.
And I, and I would note that the way the parking, the general parking reeds for hotels, you do have to park your restaurant separately. So that's what we would be doing here, even with the outdoor seats. We have enough space and we've programmed that out.
I, I think in terms of, my feeling about what Lane has said would be that that's what pushes me a little bit to worry about this being not, this not being an independent project in the P L O, you know, that, that this project washes over into the rest of Radnor and may, is, could make for some difficult situations down the road. I don't know. I don't see those yet. But I, I, that's, that's, I don't know, Lane, if I captured that at all correctly, but.
Well, so one of the issues that we had last meeting, and I don't think it's in this memo, is the idea of what is a hotel? Is, you know, clearly one of the, the nation worldwide franchises is a hotel, but what about a bed and breakfast or some kind of small private hotel?
The zoning ordinance regulates bed and breakfast separately from a hotel.
Okay.
In fact, I think the zoning ordinance calls it hotel or motel. And we do regulate bed and breakfast separately as a separate use in the code. So there would be no distinguishing between that. And ultimately, if somebody wanted to come in with a project that didn't seem like was a hotel, ultimately, that's my determination to, to flag that during whatever project, whether it's a building renovation or a use permit or a land development, it will get flagged at that point in time.
And are you able, or were you going to tell us which locations in Radnor would be applicable to, to this ordinance?
We spell it out in the, get the specific language. There's only one non-conforming hotel that I'm aware of, and that's the Hotel in the Villanova Conference Center parcel, and it's P I zoning. We address that through allowing it there as a special exception. The only other two hotels that we are aware of, the Wayne Hotel in the PB District and the Radnor Hotel, I'm sorry, the Wayne Hotel in the W B O D District downtown, and then the Radnor Hotel in the PB District. This would then also be applicable in the districts that do allow hotel as a principal use, and that's C 2 general commercial, C 3 commercial dis, uh, service commercial, PB Plan Business District would be the other districts that it is allowed in.
I have a question about the hotel issue. Back in the dark ages, when I worked for my family business and we sold beer and things like that, we would call on the occasional restaurant that was a hotel license. And I remember calling on a chain hotel in the upper part of Montgomery County that had six closets with light bulbs. They were the hotel rooms, and the rest of it was a giant restaurant. So is it, can you, under our existing code, envision a scenario where someone creates a vest pocket hotel just to get rooftop dining?
Well, I don't believe anybody's muck with an idea to try to hit something through. I'm not aware of anything that that exists in the Radnor township, and if it were to be proposed, it'd be compliant with part of the law. And then ultimately, in terms of the general interpretation of the principal use, principal use is a restaurant or a hotel, what is the property liable or the function of this site? How is this site for a, for a, in terms of, of liability traffic there? How to make that analysis and say, okay, is it more heavily used as a hotel or is it more heavily used as a restaurant? The table that you're giving, I'd probably say that the restaurant is a principal use or whatever, etc. At the analysis in terms of more area, you know, heavy use of spaces.
Okay. So I think we're okay with, I think we're okay with dropping that.
Deleting, deleting, right, deleting number six?
Yes.
Got it.
The next one is no propane-fired heaters shall be used on the roof. So we did have, I think we left in, the whole section on outdoor heaters. I didn't remember deleting that, but maybe we did.
No, we, it was originally in the.
Oh, yeah, we, but we left out that last piece and we had the other parts in there. Okay. Yeah, I know that was a, a comment that we've received. Originally, we were thinking we were just deferring to code, but I don't know that it necessarily, you know, creates an issue for us.
So you're okay with?
Yeah, we're okay with that. Sorry, I was thinking I actually left in the whole section, but I didn't.
Mission members, just for, for thought, if the thought is to preclude that, and again, I don't know what the thought process was in, in 2019, and I think outdoor spaces are treated a little bit differently now. But there are building code regulations that govern fire safety and protection, all of those things like that. So my recommendation would be that you would allow it, subject, and it would be subject to any of the underlying building codes. So if the building codes allow for it and provide for it in a safe manner, then we should probably consider allowing it, understanding that there are provisions in other codes that would regulate it.
And there is, it does reference International Fire Code too, in the language, and we did keep that in.
I guess I'm okay with that. I.
Am I speaking not in the P M?
Yep.
And then the last one listed here, number eight, no signs advertising rooftop dining shall be permitted unless in compliance with and permitted by Article 21 of this chapter. We're fine with that.
Then if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think we've already, as part of this discussion, talked about non-conforming hotels. I think that Mr. Kachansky has identified them. We've talked about parking and that the applicant has said they're gonna have to meet the parking requirements for a restaurant anyway. And then that would bring us down to section seven with the, you know, there's language in there, restaurant or banquet space. I guess I was being overly cautious and worrying about a restaurant, a hotel that wouldn't necessarily have any restaurant facilities but would, and I just don't think that's a plausible, and, but just banquet space facility, I don't think that's a plausible worry. So I think unless anybody else has a concern, I think you've addressed everything in my memo.
Yeah, Mary, I agree with you on that, on section seven. So I, I guess, we're, we're.
Did they have a, you mentioned a couple items you found in your review? Is there anything else you need to touch on?
No, no, I don't, I don't think so. We got the signs. It just seemed like, well, food preparation on the rooftops should not be included in open flame, right? No problem.
Which we'd be okay with.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to put that back in, that was a separate one.
That's right. And I just didn't, I just didn't note that in the memo.
Yeah.
Right?
I think that, I think that was.
Rooftop must be surrounded by walls, 42, that'll be dictated by other building code requirements. So of course, we'll comply with whatever fall requirements and fall protections there would be. Parking, but you addressed it in, you know, the, the little paragraph below.
Yeah, that, the Wayne Business Overlay had a specific parking requirement related to valet, which obviously, I know, obviously totally different situation, you know, with this.
Those were just a couple of points that I noted that were not in the memo that were in the Wayne Business Overlay.
So Mary, is it worth talking a little bit about an option that we have here, which would be approving this, approving the ordinance for P L O only, and, and then taking the other, having the, any other cases go to the zoning hearing board? And I'm, and I'm not saying that I, I'm gonna try to force that. I'm just saying, I'm putting it out there as, as just an option that was, was available to us, depending on how this, this hearing went tonight.
Right. I think when we, when we talked as a group before the meeting, we talked about anything that could happen at the meeting and, you know, what are. about anything that could happen at the meeting and, you know, what our, like, bottom line was, and that would be, that would have been our bottom line. Fortunately, I think the Planning Commission has successfully reviewed an ordinance that could work in all districts, and I think you're fortunate that it went that way.
I feel that way, too, so I just wanted to say that. How do the other planners feel? Does someone want to put forth a motion?
Well, I will do my best. I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance as further refined during the discussion here tonight.
Mr. Nercini and I have compared notes, and so that'll, that'll work well, that motion will be fine.
Could, could, could I just offer a clarification?
Sure.
That, that if we move to recommend approval of the hotel rooftop dining ordinance modified by the memo from Grimbeane and Thatcher of September 28, 2021, to add in paragraphs 1, 2, 5, and 8? Does that, does that accord with what you were?
I'm sorry, we were talking about another matter, so could you repeat that?
Sure. So it would be.
It was not an unrelated other matter.
It would be a motion to recommend approval of the rooftop dining ordinance as modified by the memo from Grimbeane and Thatcher of September 28, 2021, to now add in paragraphs from that memo, paragraph 1, 2, 5, and 8?
With the possible correction that item number one will be amended to note that the rooftop dining area must be operated by the operator of a restaurant inside the hotel, as opposed to the operator of the principal use.
Correct, agreed.
And.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate your time.
Next up on the agenda is the Delcora Act 537 Plan.
Steve?
So, Mr. Chairman, we have the Act 537 Plan update, which is required by DEP. I'm going to let Roger Phillips step through very briefly the meat and potatoes of it. I think it's, it's laid out in a way, it's pretty easy to follow, good four, four alternatives, and, but I'll let Roger step through that.
And Steve, before Roger, though, should we talk a little teeny bit about just the history that the Planning Commission's had with this in 2020, in?
So the last Act 537 planning document in front of you was Delcora looking to sell their system to Aqua, and just so everybody here knows, Radnor Township does not treat sanitary sewer, we convey it to others to be treated. It goes from us to R H M through entities in Delaware County, ultimately to Delcora, where it can be treated or moved down to South, the Southwest Treatment Plant in Philadelphia. So this is a tool that's required by DEP because of this type of change. So this has nothing to do with that Act 537, that was a separate item, sale of their assets to, or transfer of their assets to Aqua. This is solely about the future and how we deal with it, and when I say we, because we're, we're part of it.
Great, thank you, Steve.
So as Steve mentioned, Delcora is the entity that treats the wastewater from a majority of Delaware County, and their system is broken up into two, into two halves, East Side System and the West Side System. The difference being, the West Side System goes to a treatment plant located in Chester that Delcora owns, that, that they treat this, the sewage there. The East Side System transfers the sewage by pumping it to the city of Philadelphia, to the Southwest Treatment Plant. So the city of Philadelphia is under a consent order with the EPA to address and separate combined, their combined sewer system, and it's a, it's a very arduous 15-year plan, very aggressive, very costly. So Delcora chose to, to explore pulling out of Philadelphia and doing something, treating it themselves, and, and leaving, leaving the city of Philadelphia and leaving that contractual obligation, which comes along with that, a lot of capital to, to assist the city in, in upgrading their facilities. So that's what this, this 537 Plan that was in your packet, that's what that does. It addresses options and alternatives for the East Side section of Delcora. And in that analysis, the chosen alternative is, is putting in a, a very long, large tunnel, and using that as, basically as a holding tank for when, when large rains come, hold it, and then slowly let it out into their own system, with, with a treatment plan upgrade to go along with that. So it's basically what this plan is in front of you. So part of the Act 537 regulations is every individual municipality's planning commission has to review this and, and feel free to make comments, or to, to just agree that the way it is, is the way it is. Forty, I believe there's 44 municipalities that contribute to this, I think that's the number, 41, 44, something like that. So they're all, they're all going through this exercise. So what you can do tonight is you can, you can choose to just accept the plan with no comment, or you can provide comments, and Steve and I will take those comments, and we will forward them back to Delcora, or you could choose to, to deny it for whatever reason that you would do that, but that's, that's an option, but, you know.
And Roger, what does that denial amount to, really?
Uh, I, nothing, I believe. I mean, I think the, the plan, the plan will, in some form, move forward, you know, once, once Delcora takes all of these comments into, into account, it'll move forward. So I, I think this is, this is an opportune time for you to either, to either comment or to accept it the way it is. And it doesn't, again, Steve mentioned this, it doesn't affect the Radnor Township sewer pipes, right? This is, this is just for conveyance and treatment. Radnor Township still owns their sanitary sewers, and this doesn't change any of that, doesn't affect any of that, this is just for the long-term treatment.
Roger, your company has drafted this document.
That's correct.
Is there any, was there any conflict of interest issue that came up at all? Because township's on one side, and, you know.
I did not work on this. I'm giving you the 50 cent tour of this, because I'm familiar with it, but I did not work on the document on behalf of Delcora.
You know, in a law firm, you'd have to get a consent for the whole firm, so. Was there any discussion with the township about that? I mean.
We discussed this, Mr. Kunda, and Roger and I discussed this, and, so with Gannett Fleming, Roger is our point of contact, and his group are the people that work for us, and the discussion was, his group is not working on this. Gannett Fleming has thousands of employees, whether it's from the same building or somewhere else in the country, we did not see a conflict with the fact that he had no input into it. He's representing us, so to speak, from the sanitary sewer system.
But I mean, your review on our behalf has no, there's no negatives, you're not, there's no letter from you saying, these are the five problems I have with somebody else in my company drafting this kind of thing.
I, I didn't review this, I'm just providing you the information and the facts that are contained in the, in the report.
Has, Steve, has this been reviewed in-house?
So the, what Roger put forth is, so we've read it, we've reviewed it, we were hoping that, I'm hoping that the planning commission did also. From here, it's going to go to the board, whether you recommend, you know, it could be a recommendation of denial, like, all those things Roger said, recommendation of approval. So for me to say to you, I have researched thoroughly, it's Act 35, Act 537's by nature are high level, this is high level, they give us four alternate plans. The plan they put forth is at 470 million versus what they feel will be at least 600 million with the city of Philadelphia. I'm not here to dispute that, because there's no, no dat, no raw data. I mean, they go through tables of things, and they show, if you look through the Act 537, there is a table that shows costs. So what I can tell you is it is the least expensive option based on data from Delcora. So I didn't put those numbers together, I take it at face value. And, hang on, let me flip to that page. Here we go. So they did it in ascending order. Alternative 2, which is their recommendation, use round numbers, 472 million. Alternative 1, which was new pipelines and the wastewater treatment plant expansion, was 560 million. Alternative 3, construction of a new wastewater treatment plant and associated conveyance facilities, 613,000.
Million.
And, I'm sorry, 613 million, and stay in Philly, 882,000.
Million.
Million, sorry again, folks. And the one thing they note, the cost of the Chester County treatment of almost 23 million is not included in each alternative because of the common, it is a common cost that will be incurred regarding, regardless of the selection. So what they're putting forth is numbers that show that Alternative 2 is the cheapest, the least expensive to what will be the ratepayers, which are the residents eventually, not just our municipality, but all the municipalities. So in that respect, like I say, Skip, there's only so much to review here, they're not providing a lot of data as how they came up to 295 million for the tunnel segments and shafts, 47 million for the pump stations. I can tell you, I take it at face value, at what they put forth, and the least expensive option by a considerable amount is Alternative 2.
Now, Steve, the, kind of, your explanation, I thank you for that, kind of highlighted for me the questions I had reading through this and, and seeing it as very high level, and not getting into the nitty-gritty, and one of the first things that concerned me about the chosen option was like feasibility, geotechnical studies, they mentioned rock permeability, but I've had lawsuits all about the rock, and so, I mean, that's like one of the first questions, and is there a point when this goes under that kind of review and microscope, and?
So if you look further, yes, I mean, but if you look further in, there's a, a calendar, if you will, bar graph, and it shows the Act 537 Plan and tunnel permits. So.
What page are you on, by the way?
That would be page 51. So again, I'm not speaking for Delcora, and if, if it would so please this board, we'll get a representative of Delcora here at the next meeting, if that's really what you, you know, because we received the report, we're giving the report to the, to the Planning Commission, right? I didn't create the report, neither did our consult, this consultant. So we can get somebody from Delcora here, but I think that.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Would we have time? Is there time in the, in the calendar for that? Because we, I think we would really like.
We have a 60-day deadline, right?
Yeah, we would really like that, I think, because here's where I'm coming from. I know Philly's going to, going to do a boring job, because they got one pipe system, and that boring job is like, super expensive, it's going to be super, super expensive, and everyone's going to eat that cost. So that's, I know that's coming, but I'd love to ask the Delcora, it'd be fun to ask the Delcora person direct questions, you know, like, I, I don't.
I, I can tell you, if you go on to Delcora's website, there is a very extensive PowerPoint presentation that explains all of this, and I, I'll make myself a note, I'll distribute that to everyone tomorrow. It probably answers a lot of your questions.
That would help, that would be helpful.
That go into this.
Yeah, because, you know, I ended up like, just looking at, at some best practice stuff about deep tunneling, and, but what do I know?
Yeah, because they, they've had, Delcora's had a number of meetings with municipalities. I think they had three with, with us.
And they actually did come out here for the Board of Commissioners meeting for the previous Act 537.
Right.
So if Roger sends, he'll send that, and we'll reach out to them, to have them here at the next Planning Commission meeting, hoping we can meet timelines, and they may be needed to come to the Board of Commissioners. So that way, literally, you'd be getting it from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, I'm, as, as one person, I'm more comfortable with that setup, I, it just feels like we, we get a little more time to do a little more deeper dive on this.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like the, your next meeting will be, what, the first week in November, which is just over the 60-day limit, but I think it's close enough, that we would get them comments in a timely fashion.
Good.
So then, my recommendation is, we'll table this until next month, you'll have Delcora here, hopefully, they've been very responsive, and Roger, in the meantime, we'll get you some of that backup information.
And do we know anything, just one other question I had, of course, was, I, I understood, like, we have an existing contract expiring, we're not going to get in this situation where we pull out and Philly's going to come after us anyway? Because they're going to look to lighten their load on this.
Well, from a, from a physical standpoint, you were not able to pull out.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm talking legally, commitment-wise, like, our commitment to pay whatever the 600-some-odd million is our share because of what we currently put into their system, I'm talking about the legal aspects.
The, the way that, that that would work is, it's included in the rates that, that the homeowners pay as, as debt service or capital dollars.
My question's broader about, about the.
Yeah, but you mentioned you're paying 600 million dollars, you're not paying 600 million dollars.
That's the price tag, I, I'm just using.
Right, but there's.
I'm not, I'm not.
Under, under the contract and the, and the billing with Delcora, Radnor Township does not pay them a capital contribution in order to build this project, it is in the rates as debt service or capital savings.
No, I, I understand, I, I'm just talking about the legal obligation to pay, regardless of.
So you're saying with the contract with Philadelphia, you're saying that if we.
You, you don't have a contract with Philadelphia.
So we just send them, I mean, there's got to be some agreement.
It's Delcora, Delcora, Delcora is the agency with the, with the.
Right, that's what we're talking about. I, I, maybe I'm you being a little too euphemistic with the royal we, but that's what I'm talking about, we're talking about Delcora's plan, we're part of that, we're reviewing that. My question is.
You're, you're a customer of them.
Also, it's.
You, you got to think bigger and broader, I'm talking about the legal implications.
I, I understand what you're saying, Chris, you're saying, if this plan were to move forward, would Philly go after Delcora slash ratepayers for money? I, I mean, and I think that's what Roger said is true, we don't have a, a contract with them, Delcora does, and we have to feel that Delcora understands their contractual obligations enough to know that, well, first off, we're not sending you anything, but if there is a contract, how is that contract pulled out of? And I think that's a great question for Delcora when they're here.
Right, I, I was just wondering if you had any more sort of details or aspects on, on the legal, as opposed to the engineering aspect of it, the, you know, the legal side of it.
That's why we have these great solicitors here.
And looking at the Delcora document, though, we're locked in, or Delcora's locked in until 2028. You're not going to build this tunnel in a year, or two years, or three years, probably.
There's a timeline in the plan.
Yeah.
I believe it's eight or nine years.
2028.
So they're aiming to coincide the cessation of business with Philadelphia with the completion of the alternative, number two.
I believe that's the plan. I believe that's the plan, yeah. That's how I understand it.
Chris?
Yeah.
This is one of those legal issues that engineers know more about, but normally, when we get an Act 537 plan, there is a timeline to review and comment on, on the, the provisions. What is, do you know what the timeline is?
Yeah, it's 60 days from September 1st.
All right, so they would have to comment by November 1st.
Yeah, but our meeting's the 4th or the 5th, so I think it's close enough.
So you think that they'll, they'll still be... So is that what you meant, Chris? That kind of, like, what's the legal context in which?
No, no, I, I, I was, I was thinking, there's two aspects to me, to this, two, two components. One is the legal aspect and ending the, Delcora, ending its legal relationship with whatever the municipal authority is that currently treats our, our waste. There, there, there's that piece of it, and just making sure that they're, they're solid on that. That was really only my, my, my question, because I, I see two potential issues. I'm a litigator by, by, you know, training, birth, whatever.
Well, when we sat down to prepare for this meeting, I think, one of the questions I asked, and if this is, like, if this information isn't correct, I apologize, but that issue of transferring and, and moving along, that was decided already, and so that's not before us tonight. That was reviewed by the Planning Commission in a meeting like last year, and...
That's, that's for the sale, he's not, he's not referring to that.
He's not referring to the sale.
No. So I, I'm referring, it's okay, because we're, I want to take any more time with it. The answer is you don't have, I, I guess, the answer.
I mean, I think we have to trust Delcora, who has the contract, to put forth a plan that they can execute, right? Without getting into legal trouble. But to satisfy any of your concerns, that's a question for next month.
Oh, absolutely. It was more a question for you all, because I, I've never been involved with this before, whether you had any, any sense about that, and, and what the likelihood of, of any potential issues with, with Philadelphia down the line. Because there, there seems to me a lot of potential contingencies that aren't really addressed in this report, and that, that was my main concern with it.
So I guess with that, I would just say, that issue could be addressed to Delcora if they will attend the next meeting. And just to clarify, the next meeting, I think, should it be November 1, Monday?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not the 4th, it'll be on the 60-day, coincide with the deadline.
Roger, you saying the BOC has to act in 60 days, or we have to act in 60 days?
You have to respond in 60 days.
Well, actually, I guess officially it would fall on the 31st, but then carry over the 1st.
I think we can squeak in a day late.
Go ahead.
Or two days late.
So we're going to table this. Do we need a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
I, I would offer that in, in the next couple of weeks, if you have specific questions, if you want to forward them to me, and I will make sure that, that everyone will be prepared to address them at the next meeting.
That's great, Roger, thank you. I don't see any public here. Do we have, I guess we don't have any public comment?
This is Megan.
Oh, hi, Megan.
I don't know if you can see me or not.
Yes, yes.
But I just had one, I just had one other comment for the, for the storm water, for the, for the water issue. If anybody's interested, you should look up the Green City Clean Waters out of Philly. I, I think 2036 is the year that they're under a lot of pressure to reduce the amount of water that they have to treat in Philly. So it's coming up, and I would assume that this is a part of that process. So what I understood is that, you know, legally, they wouldn't mind having less water to process. But it's a, it's an interesting read, their whole plan, and I think that ultimately, it, it might bear some relevance to our next conversation about it, or at least answer a lot of questions.
I agree, Megan, thank you very much, because I think that ties it together for us, especially from the Philly angle, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, if they'd rather not have the water, then they're not likely to sue us for leaving.
Yeah, they don't want to need more water to treat. Absolutely not, is, is my understanding.
Thing I was, I was after, so thank you.
Just so we're all clear, it's, it's not really water.
Well, thank you, guys. We're going to adjourn the meeting, I think. Oh, yeah, do we, motion to adjourn? Second. Aye. Good night.
Aye. Have a great night, thanks.
Thank you, Megan, you, too.
Thanks.